Excuse me, call to order a regular meeting tonight. We are here in the public hearing, the room here, September twelve and twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M. And roll call we have last Norfair, Don Christensen, and Will Westone, Scott Harmon, and me, we are here at the the dice here. And Mayor Ken Lan is he on Zoom tonight? And the reason why she wanted me to run the meeting tonight. And we have Jake P T C Manu, he's excuse himself tonight. Well, we have a full house tonight. Thank you so much. Yeah. We don't have that many, you know, very rare, but wonderful. Appreciate that very much to come in here tonight. The time right now it's six thirty and we'll turn over to Don Christensen for the opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Council may remember that several months back, Mr. Erickson, Adrian Erickson came before us and talked about the lack of practice fields for girls softball. Well, we've got plenty of practice fields for Little League and boys' baseball and football and soccer and everything, but the girls are a little lacking in practice areas. Was I was talking to him recently, he mentioned that he was coach of the fourteen U state champions. And so I asked him to bring those here tonight so we can celebrate with them and they can lead us in our flag ceremony a little bit later. Right now we'll turn the time over to Mr. Erickson for a little definition and explanation of what he's got here. And if any of you want to look at those girls, Congressman Burgess has a ring that he likes to show off. Most of those girls have three and four. So they are a championship team. Mr. Erickson?
Yes, sir.
And thank you, everybody, for showing up today. I'm just gonna read something I put together today. I would like to thank the city for recognizing the hard work that these girls have put in and to provide a facility where these girls call home. The selfless work from the West Valley Fast Pitch Board and all of the coaches that were willing to give their time to mentor the girls and the parents for their willingness to entrust us with the health, well-being and to coach these young ladies. And last but not least, the West Valley City Storm for your passion for the sport. You love your commitment to become the best athletes that you could be. I would like to take a minute to recognize the tournaments that they attended this season. Their first tournament of the year was Grantsville. The girls were a fresh new team, learning how to play with one another. Overall, they took third place. Oak Mountain, they overcame adversity, getting knocked down into the loser's bracket early on, coming back for a second overall place. In the West Valley Gerald Wright Tournament, the girls were becoming a team, taking a solid second overall place. In Ogden, the girls got their first taste of the hot summer, coupled with a hundred and forty-degree turf, they took an overall third place. State Tournament, the girls came in strong, going undefeated in bracket play, taking first place overall. Wacky Warriors, the tournament that has probably the most meaning, I think, to not only myself, but to the coaching staff and the girls. Raising money and awareness for childhood cancer. I would like to play, pay homage to Xander Heaton, the young boy who was taken too soon from this world due to cancer. It was former Mayor Gerald Wright who paved the way for what was known as Bonnet Ball and today as fast pitch softball. Without his support, I cannot say that there would be a West Valley rec softball team today. I hope this is a mere springboard for the city of West Valley to continue to support the future female athletes for generations to come. Thank you.
Ladies, we're gonna ask you to come up here and stand in front of the dais and we're gonna get a picture of you all together with us.
We might need you to do what you're doing. Sorry, this thing's big. Okay, one I'm gonna do first and then you got lots of family here. Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thanks for representing West Valley. Good job.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Don. I appreciate it very much.
Take one more minute.
Sure, go ahead.
You mentioned that this started with Mayor Wright and Bonnet Ball. When my daughter, who just married off her twenty-two-year-old daughter last week, was your age, I was her coach for one year in Bonnet Ball. So I know what you're going through. I know what you've been through for the tournament. She only lasted one year in the program, so then she found other things to do. But congratulations, ladies, and we know you're very intelligent young ladies. If you happen to leave during the meeting, if it gets a little boring, we understand. You have that right and privilege. We have to stick out to the end. Thank you again.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, congratulations to you guys. It's wonderful. We have approval minutes. It's the September fifth, twenty twenty-three. I will turn over to the council for discussing or motion.
I would motion to approve this September fifth minutes.
We have a motion, I have a second, so those are in the my, in the favors of this motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Mayor. Motion pass it unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Now I have a public comment and each one of you have three minutes to come up to a microphone right there and have a monitor in front of you and you can speak directly to me. The mayor's here not here tonight, so I'm a mayor pro tem and this is not a debate. From this only and also it's not a question and answer. So each one of you has three minutes and now I can call it the speaker number one. You can come up and so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Michael Finch. I live at thirty-four forty-seven South Fremont Circle, District Three. And council, Mayor Protem, and I guess Mayor Lang on Zoom or team here. I, as a citizen of West Valley, I checked the agenda that you have, not as often as I should, but I happened to last week and I was happy to see that one of the items that you'll be discussing today is the ratification of the city manager's nomination of Jamie Young as Parks and City Recreation Director and I'm here, I'm very pleased with that. I'm here to encourage you to, I don't know what ratify means for City Council. To me, that means you're gonna do it. But maybe instead of city council language, that means something different. So I just thought I should come and know that I support her as someone that knows her working with the West Valley, the West Fest Committee. I've worked with Jamie on and off for different capacities for the last eight or nine years. But the last three or four years, she's been on our committee full-time, which means her dedicating after hours to our meetings at least once a month and sometimes every week as we approach West Fest and Jamie's always led us and counseled us. And but I always find the true nature of somebody when things don't go right, because when things go great, everybody's fun to work with. But sometimes as a committee, we don't always agree. We have discussions, we, just as you do, you point out why you feel you, your, your way is maybe the direction to go. And regardless of the direction that we take, whether it was one that maybe Jamie agreed with or not, when we're done, it's okay, let's move ahead, let's get this done. There's no grudges. It's, it's just okay, we're a team here, we're a committee and let's get it done. I don't know how many years she has with her current position as the Assistant Director, but that's, I'm sure she's got a lot of experience and to lose that kind of experience would be a huge waste. I'm sure she's got her own ideas of how she wants to run the Parks and Rec and that's great. But she also has the history to make the right decisions to move forward. So again, I would encourage you to vote the affirmative for her nomination when that, that does come up. And I also want to thank Nancy Day. I've worked with her as well on the committee years ago until Jamie took over and Nancy was finishing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Second speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Well, I'm actually gonna talk in opposing of ratifying Jamie Young's appointment. There is no rush for the city manager to rush his appointment through. In the next few months, we'll have a new city manager. Let's let that city manager start picking their own employees. Another thing I want to point out, I want you to remember, a few months ago, the fitness center came asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an electric bill. This is a big concern. I don't believe Jamie has the experience with working with budgets. And it was a closed interviews. They only talked to a couple people. I believe that there's better people in the county. It should have been opened up for more people to come in and you might get somebody with a lot more budget experience and more park and rec experience. Like I said last week, our parks in the last five years have gone down. They're not getting better.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
Good evening. My name is James Chittister. I live at five zero zero seven West Sandwell, West Valley City. I'm a second-time homeowner here in West Valley City and have chose to raise two amazing young daughters here. Sorry, I get emotional. I speak about my family. I'm calling to, I'm speaking to you today about the rezoning in Highbury Park Place. I apologize, I forgot the zoning. It's G P Z five two thousand twenty twenty-three, I believe, is the one. It's with rezoning from residential to mixed use. I wanted to speak to you against that. I'm a resident. I actually live directly across the street from this. It would totally change the aspect of our neighborhood from a quiet, lovely suburban neighborhood to a Vegas-style resort. While I agree it's a great potential for our city, I don't think that this is a location. I'm raising my young granddaughter. And now I feel safe letting her in the yard with the, with the size of this development and the impact of the transient society it'll bring. I won't feel that security and safety any longer. I know this is a great neighborhood. Our previous police chief lived in that neighborhood. We've worked very hard to make sure that the strongest people in that community is our homeowners association. We don't have crime in our, in our neighborhood. I think we're inviting something that we shouldn't with this development, so I'm encouraging the council and the mayor, please. Please deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number four.
Hi, my name is Trudy Magby. I live at forty-six fifty-three West Palmer Drive in West Valley. And I know that some friends and neighbors came to you in June pleading for some help on Palmer Drive for the traffic that is happening on there. I have been working, trying to get some help. I've been working with Eric to see what we can do to get this slowed down because I've known, I've lived on this street twenty-two years and just have noticed over the last couple of years that it's getting worse and worse as far as the traffic and the speeding. We've had, since I've turned in my report for the traffic study, we've had three accidents. One literally just happened Sunday and it involved one of our vehicles that was parked in front of our house and it was a head-on driver-to-driver, both airbags deploying and then the car bouncing into my husband's business truck that was sitting in front of our house. That's two major accidents on this road within three months and we are just nervous because we feel like we can't have our kids on the streets because these cars are just flying around the bends. Neighbors are worried about pulling out of the driveways because the car is flying around the bend. I live right by the dip, so I see a lot of cars disabled because they slam that dip. And that's what we're thinking happened on Sunday is they were flying down the road, slammed the dip, swerved, hit the other car head-on and then bounced that car over and hit our vehicle. We're just asking, we, we, we're asking for speed bumps. Ben View's got speed bumps and a lot of people say they don't like going down there because they don't like the speed bumps. We want the speed bumps because we want that slowed down so we can feel safe to have our kids drive on the sidewalk, walk, and we have a lot of people that walk our streets and the canals and things like that. We just want it to feel safe and I've posted signs out in front of my home to try to get people aware that, you know, there's kids out there and to slow down and just take your time, but they just, I mean, they'll, you'll hear them just skidding to a stop once they realize that there's that dip and it's like that could be a child or an elderly person or, you know, an animal and then they're swerving and we're just, we're, I don't know what else to do. I've been, I've got a list here of everything that I've done for the whole year. People that I've talked to in the neighborhood, their experiences. It's just, it's gotten worse and I'm, I'm, I just don't know what else to do. I talked to Eric on Monday and he says, well, you just, you don't qualify for anything. You, you don't meet the criteria of what we need. And I says, okay, I don't, we might not meet the criteria for the speeding, which I don't understand that because I've noticed a huge increase on it. But I says, what about the accidents? Because now we've got three accidents, two of them within three months, and this one was more severe than the last one. So I don't know if you want this or.
Yeah, you can pass to Nicole, then she can pass to us. Thank you. Thank you. So anyone here wants to, okay, go ahead. State your name and your address so we can have a record for you.
Walt Sorensen, twenty-seven ninety-seven South Arro Court in the Highbury neighborhood. I would like to speak against the proposed rezoning in that area, G P Z five twenty twenty-three. Although this sounds like a great opportunity to bring in some attractions to the city, is the wrong location. To bring some history, this area was originally all supposed to be residential R one eight. The change in twenty-twelve to allow the Highbury pinnacle apartments to go in was not a great change for the area. The existing general plan had townhomes on that list. And that specific lot where this is being questioned for rezoning, this is one of the areas where medium density was placed on. I asked the city council to reconsider the general plan, reduce that from medium density back down to one R one eight because this area can't support it. We can't increase high density and high density and high density. There are areas and places and spaces that you can do that and it makes sense. But when you lump everything in one area, it doesn't make sense. This area is going to be impacted by the changes that are happening to Bangor Highway where thirty-one hundred south and twenty-four hundred south are going to be removed as entrances to Bangor Highway in the next few years. This means that any traffic study that has been currently done doesn't make any difference because that traffic is going to change in the future, in the short future. I'd also like to make some quick comments as I am also very aware of Palmer Drive. I lived in that neighborhood for many years. My mother still lives in that neighborhood. It has been a problem for the last forty years. It was nice when they added the speed bumps further down past Charles Drive, but it still needs speed bumps in that area. It needs signs at the dips to make that area safe and to bring awareness to other people that come speeding through that neighborhood. I hope that the council will consider this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Richard Noack at twelve thirty-two West Parkway Avenue. I know I've spoken on the same subject again, so I'm just basically reiterating them. I attend some of these council meetings and I talk to many residents. And I see that the council flips agriculture and changes zonings and we're getting a lot, we're getting too many high-density buildings and complexes and apartments and this creates more congestion and when we get more congestion, then I start hearing complaints about traffic and speeding. So it continually becomes a compound problem. I've lived in old communities back east that are hundreds of years old where they put a stop to development and people live in these R ones or in housing and there are some apartments in these small communities, but it's spread out to where people are still happy and they can get around. It's not too congested or elbow to elbow. And as we continue to build more in West Valley, it's gonna create more animosity between residents and the government. I think the city, you know, look at some of the models of older towns and see how they use their tax structure to support the roads and the schools and libraries. And the amenities that they need to function each year, that it can be done. It is being done in other parts of the country. So if we just keep growing because we think we need more money and more tax base, we're headed the wrong direction. So that's all I had to say again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And then, okay, I will close the public comments. I will turn this before I turn over to the council. Or let, go to city manager. You have anything to say tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go to the council, turn over to the council.
Just so Trudy knows, we're gonna study traffic calming next week, the nineteenth, and Palmer Drive will be a major part of that, so we're working on it.
Okay, now we're gonna go to item number seven, public hearings. We have the application S M I dash seven dash twenty twenty-two. Oh, by the way, Nico, if you see, Mayor C, raise your hand or something, can you let me know? I appreciate that. Okay, thank you. I will turn this over to city, city manager, please.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
The redevelopment agency is the applicant in this item and is seeking final plat approval for what basically amounts to lot line adjustments and redefinition of what's already existing or has already been planned for some time in development in the Fairborn area. As you can see there on the map, this is right there in the area where the police station, the new police station is and where the old Public Safety Building was and some of the parking just above it. So it's a three-acre parcel. There are three lots, as you can see, developed and, sir, we're ready to go.
Okay, thank you. I will have the, open the public hearing for this item. The ordinance at twenty-three dash thirty-two is now your time and you can come up and if you have something to say, go ahead. It's your time now. None? I will close the public hearing. I will turn it over to the council. They can have a, you know, discuss and a motion for this item.
I move for approval of ordinance twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Second. We have motion. Have a second. We'll turn over to Nico Camat for a call.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Onens twenty three dash thirty three right here and we'll turn over to our city manager.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me.
Thank you.
This ordinance would amend section three one one oh two and establish residency requirements for city managers and assistant city managers in the city. There are three options that were provided to you in the past week as was requested. And with that, I'll leave it to you for further direction and discussion.
Good, thank you. I will turn it over to council. A motion or discussion.
Motion to approve the third option of that ordinance.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Turn over to Nico.
Before we, we vote, can we have some discussion? I'm, I'm just having trouble getting this device to work. So so remind me what that option.
It just specifies in three C that further to comply or remain in compliance shall be cause of termination by a majority vote of the council. So two and three are similar. It just adds that three as that.
Three added the.
As the compliance part.
Yeah. The penalty part if necessary.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Turn over to Nico for roll call, please. Thank you.
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. Resolution twenty three dash one twenty four. I'll turn over to our city manager.
Thank you, sir. This issue would select formally Affion Public as the executive search firm to use in recruitment process for the position as city manager. Councils discussed this in the past. I believe their, this is their selection in terms of who they'd like to use for that process.
Thank you. And I will turn over to the council for motion or discussion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty three dash one twenty four. Second.
We have a motion. Have a second. Turn over to Nico.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good, thank you. Resolution twenty three dash one two five.
Thank, thank you, sir. This resolution would ratify the city manager's appointment of Ms. Jamie Young as the Parks and Recreation Director. I didn't know that Mr. Finch was going to come and speak in favor of that tonight, but he actually provided one of the aspects upon which I selected as quality for terms of, in terms of recommending Jamie for this job. She has gone above and beyond in the twenty three years that she has been here. The job requirements that she's been asked fulfill, she's often volunteers, although I suspect sometimes she's probably voluntold for some of these extra duty assignments that she fulfills, like the West Fest Committee as one example. There are many others in which she has shown through great dedication and commitment to the city and in her activities and fulfilling the job. She's more than well qualified, both in terms of education and experience, not just in Parks and Rec, but also specifically to West Valley City. I've been considering this recommendation for a number of months in terms of what are the qualifications necessary, consulted with the Parks and Rec Director who's retiring. Also did interview after I chose the particular process I did to who I thought would be potential candidates for this internally and am recommending Ms. Young. She comes with my unqualified recommendation. She's done a great job. I know she will do a great job in the, in the position.
Thank you. When we'll turn over to the, the council for motion or discussion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty three dash one twenty five and add my support of Jamie in this position. I think she will do a great job.
Second. So I have a motion. Have a second right there. It's a turnover to Nico. Come at for a roll call, please.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Sir, if I may interrupt, since the resolution did pass, our practice in the past has been to swear in the person on the spot here in the meeting. So with your forbearance, if that would be okay, we'd like to have Ms. K Mac swear in Ms. Young right now as the director.
Okay, but before we do that, I want to say something to Jamie. I know you're very quick, very smart. I think it's you is the right person for this this post. You're welcome.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty three dash one one oh twenty three dash one twenty six.
Thank you, sir. This is sort of a cleanup item. The state in twenty twenty two general session passed H B four sixty two, which requires municipalities with fixed guideway public transit stations, better known as light rail stations, to develop a station area plan with a half mile radius around each transit station. Apparently, there were some places in the state that hadn't already done this or hadn't done it in a manner that was satisfactory to the legislature. We have, we'd adopted a station area as early or a station plan as early as two thousand and four, which has also been adopted. Or I'm sorry, adopted and amended a couple of times. But in order to stay in compliance with the state change, we're recommending adoption formally of that plan with this resolution.
Thank you. We'll turn over to the council.
Move to approve resolution twenty three dash one twenty six.
Second.
Motion and second. Turn over to Nico Cam at for a roll call, please.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, thank you. Twenty three dash one twenty seven, city manager.
Thank you, sir. This would award a contract for a five year golf cart lease for Stonebridge and the Ridge Golf Clubs in the amount of one point two million dollars coming from the fifty seven and fifty five funds, which are the golf courses themselves. This is something we do approximately every five years and it's just come up for that time again.
Thank you. We'll turn over to the city, the council. Well, discussion or motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty three dash one twenty seven.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Turn over to Nico Cam at for a roll call, please.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Twenty three dash twenty one twenty eight, city manager.
Thank you again, sir. This is a resolution that would authorize a professional services agreement with Horox Engineers for engineering services on our upcoming fortieth west project from forty one hundred south to forty seven hundred south. We're asking for one million dollars from the C I P fund. The initial engineering contract for that is only seventy nine thousand dollars, but this would recognize and authorize that opening budget to do in addition to the engineering fund, but also design and construction as those come along. And of course, any further large scale as required by ordinance, construction projects, contracts, that sort of thing will also be coming again to the the council, but this would authorize, in effect, basically what you're saying is we endorse and are moving forward with this project.
I see. Thank you. We'll turn over to the council.
Motion to approve resolution twenty three dash one twenty eight.
Second.
We have motion. Have a second. We'll turn over to Nico Cam, please.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Good, thank you. Twenty twenty three dash one two nine, city manager.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would authorize a transfer of assets as they are constructed by U T A to West Valley City on twenty seven hundred west, which will be part of the bus rapid transit project, the bike lane as we're adding it and then further afield, also the hub improvements. This portion here, however, is specifically for the bill of sale transferring those assets from U T A to us.
Thank you. The turn over to the council.
I move for approval of resolution twenty three dash one two nine.
Second.
Motion, second. We'll turn over to the Nico Cam at for a real roll call, please.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. New business. Anything? Here, city manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is one of those administrative action items. It's a final plat approval at forty five eighty one west, thirty five hundred south. In fact, it's easier to see this one that's pulled up. Have you got the map up already? Thank you. And it's two lots. It's a commercial project. It's existing development, so nothing's changing that way. Four point acres, which would be subdivided into this smaller lot. And basically what's going on is it advanced R V subdivision, which used to be Bevan Marine back in the day is looking for the ability to split off a small portion of that area so he can continue to run the like business, same type of businesses as it was in the past, but also be able to pass on to a new buyer, the owner or I'm sorry, new buyer, the business that is still there on the remaining part of the land. As you see on the map there, and it actually doesn't draw the line, but the red line shows the whole parcel. And then the parse, the part that would be split off, which should be at the bottom of that, Eric. Is that the very bottom? Okay, go back up to the yeah, that one right there. So the lot that will be split off, sorry to be describing this by eye, but basically will encompass the area sort of defined by that long shed structure, garage structure that's down there at the south corner. Yeah, right there.
But we don't see, we don't see it here.
What's that?
We don't see it in here.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm just describing it to you because I don't have the line. But if you have further question on that, we could have Mr. Pastorick come up and, and okay, give you any further as to what's going on. Like I said, it's an administrative action. This has been through the process in the past, both from subdivision, any kind of building or construction improvements. This would just a split off small portion of that for his business.
Okay. So Mr. Patrick can.
He can, if you want him to.
Good. I think it's, it's the southwest little piece that hangs out and the page four is probably actually the best. Even though it's not a map, the plat map is, is more helpful.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Actually, it's that north, south line that I don't know why, but in my memory, I had in my mind that Ken Milne project from last week out on forty seven south.
Yeah.
Good.
So yeah, that north, south line as it's described there shows you what's split off.
Yeah, yeah, we got it. Good. Thank you so much. Okay, turn over to the council for discussion or motion.
Motion to approve S M I one dash twenty twenty three. Second.
Yeah. Turn over to Nico Cam at for a roll call, please.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, thank you. We have three items in consent agenda. Is it normal, the city manager or turn over to city manager?
Yes, sir. Yeah, nothing unusual here. All warranty deeds and temporary construction easements with no significant dollars attached to them or anything unusual.
Okay. All right, I would turn over to, thank you. I would turn over to the city council for motion or discussion tonight.
Move to approve the three items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion. Have a second. So I turn over to a city recorder, Nico Cam, please.
Councilman Nordvelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whatstone?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We don't have any closed session tonight, right? No.
No, sir.
Okay, so lot motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So we adjourn. Please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. So we adjourn. Thank you so.